Please. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, February twenty eighth. In compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meetings will be held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we're going on this meeting to order, and Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Sultis.
I am here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Hartzock.
Here.
Councilmember Herjehausen.
Present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
Here.
We have a form, Your Honor.
Thank you, Krista. Everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for that. And with that, we'll look at approval of agenda. Regan, do we have any changes?
No changes tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Next up is we have Public Communication. If council could please join me in front of the dais. First off, thank you all for being here tonight. This is an honor to be in this event. And first off, I would like to ask Larry. Why should I? I know I would have messed that up. Would you like to join us up here? Larry is with us from the American Red Cross. And we have a proclamation that we would like to read. Whereas in eighteen eighty-one, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. Today, more than a hundred and forty years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in Covington who continue to carry out Clara's life-saving legacy. And whereas contributions of local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families devastated by local disasters like home fires, donating essential blood for accident and burn victims, heart surgery and organ transplant patients, and those receiving treatment for leukemia, cancer, or sickle cell disease, supporting service members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of military life, helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid. Whereas their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community resilience. Now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Covington, do hereby proclaim the month of March two thousand twenty-three the American Red Cross Month in the city of Covington and strongly urge all citizens to reach out and support its humanitarian mission as we dedicate this month to all those who continue to advance the noble, noble legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton. And with that, I'd like to give you this proclamation. Larry, thank you for being here. Is there anything you'd like to say?
If I'm reading.
Yes.
Can I just take a picture on my camera? Thanks.
Okay. So, thank you for being here. Thank you so much for this incredible honor on behalf of the American Red Cross. I really want to thank you. I'm going to give you a few statistics to shore up some of this conversation we just had. Thank you. Oh. Everyone knows my password.
Okay.
You probably are all familiar with the name, the American Red Cross. It's one of the most recognizable brand names universally. But you're probably weren't aware of the fact that we do most of our work right here in the communities. We have disaster action teams that go out the community anywhere from three to five times per night doing the same things that you see on TV where we do on national disasters. But there's some other statistics you probably aren't aware of. For instance, every eight minutes, we have an emergency across this nation the Red Cross responds to. And every two seconds, we have a need for life-saving blood for somebody. That means we need about three hundred and eighty-five thousand blood donations on a regular basis to maintain that situation. And you're probably weren't aware of the fact that Red Cross supplies forty percent of all of America's blood. So we do need a lot of blood on a regular basis. You're also probably weren't aware of the fact that ninety percent of all the people you see with the Red Cross out there in all those emergencies are volunteers. I'm a volunteer. So I asked my boss for a raise and he just laughed. There's nothing more. And you're probably weren't aware of the fact that that for every dollar donated to the Red Cross, ninety cents of that goes to humanitarian aid. And I know that because I just came back from Hurricane Indian where I was deployed for two weeks and I saw it in action. So you can rest assured that money's being well spent and I can't thank all of you enough. We encourage you all to be blood donors, encourage you all to be volunteers. We always need volunteers. And cash is king. You could always donate on our website. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, and thank all of you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Dan.
You bet.
You're welcome.
Yes, there we go. Thank you.
Is that it?
Okay. You don't want me to? Do we speak into this?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I thought I was loud enough. Okay. That's fine. Is this okay? Next, we have a proclamation for an individual who has done and given a lot in this community. He has never said no, that I can think of. He has always been, yes, I can help, or what can I do next? Help. He has been involved with this community since before we were a city. I remember this individual from, I don't remember who moved here first, but Steve, have you come up? And Steve has retired from one commission. He's retired from another commission. Who knows where he may go from here? But Steve, thank you. We have a proclamation that we would like to read for you tonight. Whereas the city council of the city of Covington wishes to recognize Steve Pan for his impactful involvement and true dedication to the community as a longtime member of the city of Covington commissions. And whereas Steve has committed to the improvement of the Covington Parks System since he was first appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission in two thousand seven, where he served over a decade and watched the park system grow. Whereas Steve also spent six years on the Covington Economic Development Council in the pursuit of developing Covington into a vibrant community and thriving city. And whereas over his past sixteen years on the city of Covington commissions, Steve has been an exceptional leader, mentor, and advocate, and his presence and contributions will be missed. And now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Covington, do hereby recognize Wednesday, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three as Steve Pan Day in the city of Covington and ask all citizens to join us in this special observance and recognition of his contributions to the community. The reason it says January eighteenth is because that was his last day on the Parks Commission. So that's why we're going that way. So, Steve, it has been an honor and pleasure serving with you in this community. I know this is not the end. This is the beginning too. Wherever it may go from here, you know, take some time off, but like to give you this proclamation and just thank you again for everything for what you've done for this community, for the city, and for me. I mean, you've been a great friend, so thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything you'd like to say?
I did say no once when you asked me to fill a vacant city council position.
Yeah.
So there's one to do that. There is one.
Yeah, well, you know, we never know.
I do want to thank, I want to thank the commissioners that I've worked with, Regan, Eason, and you all. Because the parks wouldn't be where we are if it wasn't for the contribution of everybody. I'm just a small cog. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Excellent.
You will thank me if you give it to you, don't? Okay. All right, next we have Volunteer and Commissioner of the Year and Presidential Volunteer Awards. So first is Volunteer of the Year, and he is not able to make it tonight. I think he's out having fun somewhere. Skiing. So this individual has been involved and was chosen as Volunteer of the Year for two thousand twenty-three. Brian Ball always comes and helps at Parks and Recreation events throughout the year and goes above and beyond. Covington Days and the Daddy Daughter Spring Fling Dance are the two most notable events he helped with. Coming early to set up with staff, staying late to clean up, lifting heavy objects, and even using his personal car to load event supplies, which was a huge help. He is quick to see what is needed and jumps right in without having to be asked. The Parks and Recreation Department is extremely grateful for the time Brian commits to help our events run smoothly. And we have this plaque. Next, Davey. Volunteer of the Year presented to Brian Ball in recognition of outstanding service for the city of Covington two thousand twenty-two. Jacqueline, would you like to take it home for Brian? Yeah. There we go. Why not? Thank you. Thanks, Jack. Next is Commissioner of the Year. I'd like to ask Laura to join us up here. So Laura Morrissey has served on the Parks and Recreation Commission since two thousand thirteen for ten years. She was elected by her peers as vice chair in two thousand fourteen, and since two thousand and fifteen has served as the commission chair. Laura is a great champion for Parks and Recreation as she focuses on end results such as community building, health and wellness, and access and equity. Her leadership is effective in managing the commission meetings as well as reporting to the city council. She also succeeds in coordinating with staff, with the conversations she has with friends, neighbors, and folks out in the community, and then takes that back to the commission to make comprehensive recommendations. Laura has deservedly been recognized as Commissioner of the Year in the past, yet Laura continues to be a dedicated and committed commissioner to the city and community. And Laura, we have this plaque that we would like to give to you. Commissioner of the Year presented to Laura Morrissey. I'll read it, sorry. For the Parks Commission in recognition of outstanding service two thousand twenty-two. Congratulations. Thank you.
Steve always has something to think. Um, you know, I'm just as excited about the future of Covington as I was when we moved here about thirteen years ago. And I love the slogan, growing towards greatness, because we are growing. Sometimes growing takes longer than we would prefer. But our park system has grown tremendously since when I first started on the commission. And when I look back at where things were ten years ago versus where they are now, it's just an enormous difference. And that hasn't come about just because, you know, some people on the commission sat about and wished it could be that way. It's through the choices that you guys have made on council and making hard choices and making the call to fund parks and push things forward. And so a lot of the gratitude really goes to you guys for making the hard decisions. So thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Next is our youth volunteer of the year, Amelia Bosom. Amelia, there you are, right in front row. Come on up. Thank you. Am I pronouncing that right? Bosom, okay. Amelia Bosom is a senior at Kent Lake High School. She's a competitive athlete and is the captain of the gymnastics, track, and dive teams. She has a three point nine eight GPA, congratulations, and takes many honors and college credit courses on top of that. Amelia cares deeply about her community. She joined the Covington Youth Council in January of two thousand twenty-one. Amelia was the chair of the Covington Youth Council from September two thousand twenty-one to August of two thousand twenty-two. She does an amazing job of bringing the youth council members together and making sure each individual has a voice. Besides the many hours of her time she donates serving on the youth council, Amelia also donates a significant amount of time to the Kent Clothing Bank each week. What do you find all the time? I'm impressed. That's impressive. After high school, Amelia plans to study astrophysics and would love to someday work for NASA. Wow, that's great. She will be greatly missed by the youth council when she graduates this June and heads to college. So Amelia, we have a plaque that we would like to present to you as the youth volunteer of the year presented to Amelia Bosom in recognition for outstanding service. Congratulations. Thank you for all of you here.
I just want to thank Jackie for helping me all the way through this. She's made the youth council very approachable and easy, which is really nice because I got on it in the middle of COVID and on Zoom. And so all of our meetings were on Zoom and we tried to plan things, but it was COVID. And so I just really want to thank her for helping me all the way. And yeah, just thank you.
And thank you. And next we have Presidential Volunteer Awards. Presidential awards are given for doing outstanding and numerous hours of volunteer service in our community. And first, we would like to have George Pearson join us. George? George has completed a hundred and fifty-seven and a half hours of volunteer service, earning him the Bronze Presidential Award for two thousand twenty-two in the adult category. I don't know, it could be youth category with as much as you do. His dedication to our city has been exemplary, and we are delighted to honor him this evening for his servant heart, especially for our parks. Please note that George has previously received the Lifetime Achievement Award of more than four thousand hours of volunteer work. That's just here in Covington. To ensure George receives the recognition he deserves, we continue to recognize his volunteer efforts each year, which isn't hard because you keep giving. And thank you. And we have a letter, and here is a letter for you, and then here is a pen, the bronze. George, thank you for all you do for Covington. We appreciate it. Okay. Thanks, George. Next is Anna. Well, actually, no, you're fine. Oh, Anna Nishivo, I pronounced it wrong. She's a park volunteer who is not able to attend tonight. She's receiving a silver award for seventy-seven hours in the teen category. Anna always shows up early to her volunteer shifts, brings a positive attitude, and works great with our team and patrons. She volunteers both in and out of the water, whether assisting with lessons or junior guarding. And we know we can depend on her to get the job done to the best of her abilities. And we'll make sure that she gets that award when we see her next. Next is Neil Ferry. Ferry? Ferry. They're kind. Sorry. Neil, thank you. Come on up. Neil is getting a Presidential Award for Parks Volunteer for fifty-nine and three-quarter hours of bronze medal in the teens category. The Aquatic Center approved Neil to take the Water Safety Instructor Training Course, even though he's not old enough. This. You look old enough. This was done because Neil was so good during swim lessons as a volunteer instructor aide. Neil is often the first person in the pool and is always asking if you can stay longer to help with lessons. So Neil, thank you for putting in all those hours, and it's a pleasure to give you this Presidential Award, Presidential Letter. And then here is your pen. Neil, thank you. Nope, okay. Well, thank you very much. Oh, picture. Sorry. Thanks, Neil. Next is Tegan Boo. Did I get that right? Tegan here tonight? Okay, well, we are giving them a bronze award in the teen category for fifty-two point three five hours. Tegan is one of our youngest volunteers. She has a very busy schedule, but still makes time to volunteer at the pool. She prefers to do junior lifeguarding, is very and is very vigilant at the pool deck, and works very hard doing cleanup tasks to help clean our pool deck safe when it is busy. We'll make sure that she gets this award, and Tegan, thank you very much also. I want to take and thank each of you, all your volunteers, Steve, you volunteered, all of our commissioners, everybody in this city cannot do what we do without everybody participates, and we really appreciate it. So thank you very much. We are going to have a reception for twenty minutes till seven forty-five. There is cake and goodies back there, so help yourself, and thank you again for being here tonight. Welcome back to the Covington City Council meeting, and thank you to everyone again who has done so much for our community. It was such an honor to give out all of these proclamations and volunteer, missionary, and presidential awards tonight. Next is up is our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually, and dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five five five. Campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in city hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting, is prohibited. Good, I got it done in less than two minutes.
Getting better.
Yeah. Thank you. First up is, am I pronouncing right? Ainsworth Jackson. Welcome. Thanks for being here tonight.
Sir, thank you. Thank you for having me and councilmembers. Thank you. My name is Ainsworth Jackson. I live in Kent right now, and I am the president, excuse me, the chair for the Board of Advisors for the Kent YMCA. And I have with me Dr. Veely and Maria Jackson, and I'm missing a few more of the members. Kendrick Glover, Mr. Bill Boyce, and Ron Okamoto, who is the executive for the YMCA. So as you know, the YMCA was only open roughly two thousand nineteen, September fourteenth of two thousand nineteen. And then six months later, they closed down because of COVID, just like everyone else. And so basically, they've only been open fully a little bit over two years. So I'm here today just to, again, raise awareness that the YMCA needs your help in, in, in getting the public consciousness of, you know, we need volunteers. We need employees, and they need a talented workforce. They have a difficult time holding on to talent. Again, because of the cost of living and what they can actually pay. And I noticed today, you've been thanking a lot of volunteers who have given selflessly of themselves to this community. So we are looking for volunteers, and we're also looking for donations. So if you feel it in your heart to give, please, you know, the twenty twenty-three campaign is going on for the next two months. But however, YMCA also provides additional wraparound services to the community, much like your social service programs. And a lot of that funds goes towards those programs and makes its way back into city. So why am I in Covington? Because again, within a ten-mile radius of the YMCA, we overlap Covington, Auburn, and Sea-Tac. So being the closest YMCA to you, again, hopefully we can come together as a team. And we're also looking for volunteers to join our, 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 our board. So if any of you want to volunteer or any of the volunteers that are not here anymore.
Yeah.
We want to go past the, past the bronze into the, you know, the platinum level of volunteer work. We're looking for volunteers to help us so we can move ahead and do great things. And again, I want to recognize Dr. Veely. Again, she's a professor at Washington State, and she handles the clinical department for Health and Human Services. So again, another asset that you can tap into for knowledge and information. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to address council tonight? Is there anybody online wishing to address council? Please raise your hand. Being nobody raised their hand online, then we will close this public comment period, and we will have a second public comment period at the end of our meeting. Next up is approval of the consent agenda, items C one through C ten. Motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda consisting of items C one through C ten. All those in favor state aye. Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda passes. Next up is reports of commission. We do not have a report of the Economic Development Council, Youth Council. Katie, are you, I see you online. Are you presenting? Welcome, Katie. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you, council, for having me. All right, so first we have our Great Kindness Challenge, which Covington Youth Council is committing to creating our own list that will be participating in and promoting on social media. Next, our Youth Action Days report. Meeting with our representatives and our senator was incredibly helpful in finding our voices and getting heard. We also felt that it was incredibly useful to voice our city's concerns and public safety and our own youth council's concerns. And then we also are planning on getting in touch with other youth councils in the surrounding area. And then we also are planning on getting in touch with other youth councils in the surrounding area so we can collaborate on bill writing and other areas. Also, the art show, so we have started distributing work. We actually did a sorting event before the meeting. I was unable to attend, but I heard it went pretty well. And then last, our joint meeting, everyone has come up with their, like, one topic, main topic of interest, but we're all gonna speak on every topic that we chose. Any questions?
Does Council have any questions? Thank you. That was a very good report tonight, and I'm glad you were able to meet with our Senator. So thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You as well.
Next is our Arts Commission, Patty. Welcome. Thanks for sticking around.
Tonight, we met as usual last month, and we have a couple of updates. The rotating art call is moving forward. And we are working on a theme to recommend for that project. And right now, we're looking at earth, air, and water as our emphasis for that project. Let's see. We're just still reviewing the language on that, and then we'll put it out on Cafe. Hopefully, we'll get a lot of submissions for that. That'll be pretty exciting. The vinyl wraps. All the work has been provided by the artists, and now, basically, we're just waiting for the weather. So I hear that it's supposed to be colder than normal spring, so it might be a little bit longer than usual. He needs a couple of of non-rainy days to get started on that, and it'll probably just happen like last time. One at a time, they'll pop up. All right, and then Valley Medical Center, our request, we've been working with them. They let us know they have zero dollars to help with. So that, but that doesn't mean that it's, that it's done. We're still researching some other opportunities for us to do some public art there that just puts a little, an extra challenge on the project. We are looking forward to participating in the Covington Makers Market. That has been super fun for us, and it seemed like people that stopped by our booth really enjoyed what we had going on as well. And Coming Days and Kids Fest are coming up, so we'll be working on that as well. Those are always favorites of the Art Commission because kids are the best. And then last but not least, due to scheduling conflicts, we're not gonna have a meeting next month, so I'm not. Don't miss. But we'll be back in April. Any questions?
Council, any questions for Patty?
Seems like we did the same, I just report on the same things every time, but as you all know, government takes a long time, so, but we're, we're making headway, so that's good.
And that's nice to hear the updates each time.
All right.
Patty, thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening. Don't blame me one bit. Thank you. Next is Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission, David Scalabrini. Thank you for being here tonight. Did I pronounce your last name right?
You certainly did, Mayor Weigand. Thank you so much.
Thanks for being here, David.
My pleasure, and apologies. We didn't have any reports last month. Our meeting actually was after your meeting last month. So we actually, for January, we did have new elections. I was elected as the new Chair for the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission, and Chuck Ajati was elected as the Vice Chair. For this month's meeting, we originally had Reagan scheduled to do a presentation on Covington civics. But in January, we also spent some time reevaluating the direction of the Commission and our focus, and made some decisions to kind of course correct in what we were doing, and to get back to what the Commission was established for as being a advisory to the City Council and to the, and to the city. And so we still invited Reagan, and it was, he was so gracious to join us while he was on the road, and we really appreciated that. But he was so helpful in helping us to understand the process for as we have anything that we need to bring to the council, how, what the, how that process works. We really appreciate it. And also some great feedback that he gave us on kind of the new direction that we were looking to do for the, for the Commission. Afterwards, we then had a great discussion about some of the simple and things that we could get going to help the city when it comes to things around equity culture and social justice. Again, thanks to some great insights from Reagan, and I am happy to announce that we have, after unfortunately missing the month of February and African-American History Month, we didn't get a chance to do anything, but we have kicked off what is now a cultural and equity calendar for, that is on ECSJ page on the website. We are kicking it off with the month of March to celebrate Women's History Month. With that, we have a little bit of a story about Women's History Month, along with making recommendations on picture books, young adult books, and adult books with links to the King County Library System for people. Thanks to Daphne Hernandez for all the work she put in the last week in taking our ideas and making it a reality. I encourage everyone to please go to the ECSJ page on the City Covington website and take a look. We would love in, input and feedback, but we are really excited. Along with celebrating and putting the focus on Women's History Month, we then are highlighting particular cultural events that are celebrated through the month of March as well. So we're really excited. We're gonna be looking to do this now every month. And hopefully, this will be something that the community will really enjoy. Moving forward for this next month, we will be refocusing on our, our mission and our what are, let's see, what was it? The, revisiting our work plan so that we can be prepared and then start in on some other areas that we feel we can give some assistance to the city in highlighting issues around equity culture and social justice. With that, if that's about it, any questions?
First up, I want to say congratulations, David, on being selected as the Chair of your peers, so looking forward to continuing to work with you and your entire Commission. So thank you, and I love the idea of the calendar that you're placing on there. And I know that my matron, my eleven-year-old daughter, will be on there, especially for the Women's History Month, so thank you. Does Council have any other?
Yeah, thank you, and I just want to echo what Mayor said. But so the question that I have to do, conceptually, then, you went from starting in a certain mind frame or goal and now moving more towards advisory. How is that changing the work that you all will be doing? Like, is it less hands-on and more planning and giving it to the city, or how does that?
It's really more, the, the focus, we tended to, our focus tended to be more towards getting out there in the community. How can we get the community more involved? We were missing, and with the great insights and, and input from Reagan, was actually taking some of the ideas that we already had and really seeing about how we can go about just getting these simple things implemented. Because once they're implemented, just like the calendar and celebrating Women's History Month and all that, that's going to bring about some excitement, hopefully, within the community and some visibility around the ECSJ Commission, which, of course, we are going to be highly and actively recruiting because four of us, our terms are over with at the end of September. So we're, we want to make sure that we get more people on board, just in case we lose any additional Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Well, I would just like to thank you and your team for the collaboration work that you did with the Planning Commission. We spent some time with them earlier this evening, and it sounds like you worked very well together to look at their work plan and how they want to word things, and, and some of the coaching that you gave them, your team gave them around use of words, and how important that is as we try to reach out to the community. So thank you.
Thank you, and we were really excited to do that, and really excited to continue to work with them as well as the other Commissions. I read the entire Housing Needs Assessment to be educated on what the city is faced with, and we are really excited to continue to help in any way that we can.
Thank you again, David, and have a wonderful evening tonight.
Thank you, and my apologies for not being able to be there. I'm actually still at work. Back to work and actually doing some edits for Daphne on the, the new webpage calendar, so thank you.
Thank you. Next is Human Services Commission, Monty. Thanks for being here tonight.
Absolutely, and my apologies I couldn't be there. Kids are right here, as usual. Good evening, everybody. My name is Monty. I think I know everybody on the Council, and those that I can't see. So, Human Services Commission, we did a lot in our last meeting, so bear with me. I'm gonna just, you know, keep it down to three minutes, but first thing first, we had an outgoing member, and I'm just getting on the board, so the first thing we did was really getting to know each other, which was amazing. You know, people we work with and what they are like, so we did an icebreaker, sort of like building a team from ground up. We talked about the norms. They hadn't discussed the norms, so with the new group going on, we discussed the norms. We updated our policies and bylaws. We reviewed the date and time, so now we're gonna be moving our meeting to the fourth Wednesday of the month, just to accommodate everybody's lives and schedules, and then people that are on the board. We did do a rotating schedule of who comes to the City Council meeting and presents, which I think is amazing. Gives everybody a chance to see the wonderful thing here, wonderful thing the city is doing, but also presenting on our BF. So we're all on rotation. You'll get to see each and every one of us in different months. We did talk a lot about how to sort of navigate and use the new community care specialists, like how often do we meet with the person? What sort of reports do we need to give him or he needs to come with? And just to kind of see, like, how do we best support his role and how he can, you know, support the Commission? We did a review of our yearly work plan, came up with some site visits we're doing, and then we also reviewed and reallocated some funds. We also talked about our communication plan, but that's always ongoing. So our next meeting is actually going to be the day after our next city, the four city council meetings, so maybe we won't have much to present, but looking forward to, you know, presenting at that time as well. That's all from our Commission.
Great. Does anybody have any questions?
Sean, just a comment, Monty, good to see you. I don't know if you heard the public communication from the YMCA that was in your town. Anyway, I just, I know they're one of the, I think, one of the groups that we support, but I want to circle back with them and to see how we can engage with them as well.
Absolutely. They were on the funding cycle, so I absolutely will take it back and talk about the funding and/or what resources or communication we can have with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Monty, thank you very much for being here tonight, and thank you for everything that you're doing, and have a wonderful evening. And tell your kids, have a good evening as well, since you're right there.
Thank you so much. Reagan, good to see you. And my very last comment, Julie Johnston is an asset to the city. So for you to know, it's amazing to see her work and be a liaison to us, so thank you all.
Thank you, Monty. We do not have a Parks and Recreation Commission report, and then we had our joint meeting with the Planning Commission earlier. So that concludes our Reports of Commissions. And next up is New Business, item number one, which is to approve the City Manager Merit Goals for two thousand twenty-three. Turn this over to Reagan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Wonderful to be here virtually with you tonight. So each year, the Council selects three merit goals for the City Manager. These typically come from goals or priorities that the Council has designated out of the, that, that year's annual summit. So before you, I have proposed six different goals that the Council can choose from. These are all priorities that the Council selected at our two thousand twenty-three Council Summit. Of course, if the Council has something different than what's on, what's listed here, those, we're absolutely open to that. We'll do whatever the Council likes, so I'm here to answer any questions you may have, and we just need three selected.
Okay, what I'd like to do is first, we'll go if Council has any questions, and then I'll call on each of you to give me your top three of the merit goals, and I will tally those. Does Council have any questions they'd like to ask Reagan before we get into choosing the goals? All right, I will start with Joe. Which are your three? Would you like to see as Reagan's two thousand twenty-three merit goals?
So three, four, and then I'm torn between five and six. I kind of like both of them, but if I had to choose on that one, I would go with number five.
Jennifer?
Six, then four, then five.
Debbie?
One, six, and two.
Dawn?
I had one, two, and six.
Beth?
I did three, four, and five.
Christina?
It turns out I have a question. May I ask?
It's too late. Yes.
So naturally, one and two, we need, if we don't choose them, will they not happen?
No, the, these will happen whether the Council chooses them or not. In fact, everything on this list is going to happen. This is just designating what the Council will review to, when they're determining my merit goals at my next email.
Okay, so that changes everything for me. And I will go with four, five, and six.
And I am also doing four, five, and six, so that means Reagan. Just to let everybody know that's on there, the three merit goals that have received the most votes by Council is expand, let's talk Covington by implementing ideas such as obtaining invitations for council members to speak at people's homes or at neighborhood events, and getting businesses to host talks by city officials and community leaders at a social atmosphere. Number five, which would be your second merit goal, is facilitate at least one and possibly two council member community service projects this year. And the third merit goal, which is number six, is study the feasibility of a facility that will provide future indoor aquatic recreation services that considers both the renovation of the existing aquatic center and a new facility at the town center. Do you have any questions, Reagan, on those three selected?
No, thank you, Council. Those are absolutely perfect, and we're excited to get going on them.
Okay. And so we will take, actually, we need to have a motion. So we need a motion to approve the merit goals for Reagan for the two thousand twenty-three merit goals, which are listed as items four, five, and six. We have a motion to approve, so moved. We have a second. Is we have a tie for, I'll give it to Debbie. So it's been moved by Debbie and seconded by Christina to approve the two thousand twenty-three merit goals for the City Manager. Debbie would like to speak to your motion.
And then, Todd. These are things that we all agree need to be done and are a priority.
Christina would like to speak to your second.
Just excited to see them come to the Mission.
Does anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve items four, five, and six off of the memo, attachment one, as the two thousand twenty-three merit goals for the City Manager. All those in favor state aye. Opposed, your merit goals have been approved. Thank you, Reagan. Next is New Business, item number two, consider an ordinance amending the city's criminal code. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor Weigand. Good evening, City Council. I'll keep this pretty brief. And to give you a little bit of background, what we're doing here tonight is is asking Council to adopt a catch-all provision for all state laws that will be incorporated into the municipal code. So what happens here is cities adopt municipal codes, and they come up with different ways, different lines of punishment for different crimes that are in line with state law. Recently, a case came out that said if a city hasn't specifically adopted an RCW, one of the state laws, whether that's assault, whether that's violence, whether that's trespass or anything else, any other state law, cities can only enforce those that they have actually included in their code or adopted by reference. And so that's what I'm asking Council to do here today, is to adopt all RCWs by reference as they are enacted now and in the future. What this does is our code is pretty up to date, as is, but once things are, new laws go into place and the state adopts some, and new laws and regulations regarding driving offenses or DUIs or anything like that, then if it's a new law, it doesn't automatically go into our code, and we can't enforce it in the way that we would otherwise want to. So, what the city's code, again, pretty good because it's adopted so many specific RCWs, but this is really just a catch-all provision that will that will make sure that we don't miss any now and in the future.
Does council have any questions?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed ordinance updating the Covington Criminal Code in substantial form as presented. Christina, would you like to speak to your motion?
We do not need less enforcement and more hands tied. Um, let's just do this.
Joe, would you like to speak to your second?
It it seems like the right thing to do, so that's yeah, the joke would be, what can we get away with in the next twenty minutes that chief can't get us for because it's not in our code? It's we already have our hands tied by a lot of what the state has said we can and cannot do, so let's just make sure we're doing everything we can do.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed ordinance updating the Covington Criminal Code in substantial form as presented. All those in favor state aye. Aye, any opposed? The ordinance passes, thank you. Next is new business item number three, consider a resolution writing off uncollectible surface water management drainage utility late fees, penalties, and interest. Casey?
Hi, thank you, um, Mayor, Council. Apologize uh for not being there in person. I'm a little under the weather this evening, so. Um, so just a little bit of history, what we have going on here is the city currently contracts with King County for the collection of our surface water management fees. And we have been um trying to collect on four different parcels from the Bonneville Power Administration, which is a federal agency for several years. I think this goes back to twenty fourteen. And um what we're what has happened is there was just recently a United States Court of Federal Claims ruling that federal agencies do not pay late fees, penalties, and interest. So, what we're looking to do and what King County is requesting of us is for us to take formal action to write off the prince or the interest, excuse me, on those four parcels owned by BPA, so that the county can in turn collect the principal amount that's owed to us. So, once we write off this two hundred and sixty-four thousand, almost two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars worth of late fees, penalties, and interest, then the city is going to be receiving our principal amount of almost eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So, again, this this is going all the way back to twenty fourteen. Um, we're finally getting uh our payment made, which we're very, very excited about. Dawn is very, very excited about, so. Um, so that's what we have before us tonight. So, we have a resolution that will allow King County to remove the uncollectible amount and allow the Bonneville Power um Administration to pay the principal amounts to the city. Can I open for any questions?
Does council have any questions?
Joe? So, this is gonna sound like a dumb question, but it's one I know I get asked if my bill is late. Why weren't they paying the bill in twenty fourteen to avoid a quarter of a million dollars in late fees? And looks like.
That's a really good question. Uh, did did Mark say something? Oh, sorry, I couldn't see him. Um, so. Oh, go ahead, if you'd like.
Uh, long story short, the way King County does its billing is they won't accept partial payments, so either the either the federal government was going to pay the entire amount, which included the principal and interest, or King County wasn't going to accept payment at all, no partial, no just paying the principal. And the the BPA, so that because they, the federal government took the position that they could not pay interest or would not pay interest, King County couldn't accept a partial payment. So, we've just been waiting for the county and federal government to to figure this out. And this was kind of waiting on a case on the East Coast to be determined, as Casey mentioned, and the federal federal, uh, shoot, I'm forgetting the name of the court. Uh, the Federal Claims Court has uh made a decision, and that's going to inform a lot of jurisdictions about this these kinds of interest fees and penalties.
But didn't also the BPA fought paying because they said that they didn't owe those in the very beginning?
Did you repeat that?
The BPA also stated in the very beginning that they didn't need to pay the fees.
And that's.
Fight with them to make sure that they did.
Right, and they have come around on that and are ready to cut a check for all the current fee, the principal for all the their proportional share fees that they owe under the Clean Water Act and future fees going forward.
I know, but I, when you figure the federal government's thirty-one trillion dollars in debt, you know, quarter of a million dollars is easy for them to write off, and not easy for small municipalities to.
Yep. Beth?
So, just for clarification, because I I asked the very same question, like, why are we on the hook for anyway? It sounds like if King County would have had a different manner of collecting payment, would then we have been eligible at some point, like they if they took partial payments or they took are we now kind of getting uh impacted by a King County policy, whereas I I thought it was more of a federal policy?
It's a little bit of both. It's more complicated than what I just explained about the partial payments and otherwise, but we if they were accepting partial payments, BPA would have been just paying what they already owed the city for surface water or stormwater charges. And we wouldn't, it's just that we're foregoing the interest that has accrued because they weren't paying them. So, it's not really that we're it was unfortunate that the city didn't have access to these funds over the past nine years. But now it's, now that it's been resolved, we finally can get a lump sum check and move forward with this, and that's, that's really what we're asking council, so.
But I guess from preventing future late payments, because what is going to they say they're gonna pay it, but if they decide they don't want to, it's fighting the federal government to get money is really, really a challenge. Uh, we want to make sure that we, which may not necessarily be something to decide tonight, but for us to learn, is there something that we can do to make that flow happen more efficiently, whether, since we have to work through King County on it too, there's like one more level?
Um, Mark, if I can chime in?
Go ahead, Casey.
Uh, so, um, I'm actually working with uh Ben Parrish, who's uh works with the surface water management and for the city. And we are going to be billing um BPA somewhat directly for these charges. We're still going to, we're, we're going to be sending them a letter each year showing them what they owe, and they're still gonna be sending the money straight to King County. But the problem that they have is they get that little um, you know, property tax statement in the mail, and they don't have to pay property taxes, so they just toss it in the trash. So, we're trying to find a way to touch bases with them every year, so we have a contact with BPA now, and um we're going to be billing them on behalf of King County, but still trying to find a way to to keep it in front of their um keep it in front of them so that it gets paid on time.
So, we we have to go through King County. We can't just have them bill us directly.
King County is current, yeah, they're currently our collection agent, yeah.
Dawn, did you have a comment you want to add?
Uh, Casey, Casey pretty much touched base with it. Um, if I remember right, many, many years ago when this started, there was kind of an issue with the with the amount and everything, uh, that was being uh uh on one of the parcels or something along those lines from King County to um uh BPA, and it all kind of stemmed from that, and that they then couldn't, going forward, they were like, let's just we need to resolve this one, like, say, twenty fourteen or whatever, we're good with the other things going forward, but because of this whole thing, like we've talked about that King County, would it take um partial payment? We couldn't get the rest of those fees going forward, and it just kept going. So, all I'm saying with that is most of the issue we haven't had with BPA not being willing to pay that, it's just been more the process that is going. So, that's a little bit why Casey's saying try to work with that, so we don't, you know, try to, so we don't have that problem hopefully going forward.
Okay, thanks, Dawn. Any other questions? Okay, before us, we have a motion to approve a resolution writing off uncollectible surface water management drainage utility, late fees, penalties, and interest, and authorize staff to take other actions as may be necessary to accomplish the same.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Beth and seconded by Joe. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
It sounds like a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush, and there's no way we're gonna get any of it unless we release some of this, these fees, and we have to anyway, so appreciate the staff's willingness to try to figure out how we can be more efficient in the future.
Thanks, Beth. Joe, would you like to speak to your second?
Uh, as much as I prefer to get one point one million dollars, uh, I will take eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars as well. I wish there was a better solution to this, and I wish we had been getting this money over the last nine years, but I'm happy we're gonna get it now, and I have full faith that this money will be put to good use in the city, so.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Been moved and seconded to approve the resolution writing off uncollectible surface water management drainage utility, late fees, penalties, and interest, and authorize staff to take other actions as may be necessary to accomplish the same. All those in favor state aye. Aye, any opposed? Then this resolution passes, thank you. Next up is item number four, authorize the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding and related sanitary sewer easement agreement in association with the Covington Commons Commercial Site Development Project. Selena?
Good evening, uh, Council and Mayor. Um, this item before you tonight is, I'm bringing back to you, we had originally talked about this in September of last year. Um, the developer, Covington Commons LLC, they own the property to the west of the city-owned property where the school was. Um, they have a development project that came in, um, and as part of that project, they needed a sewer easement across the city property. When we introduced this to you in September, we talked about the requirement, because it is a city property and they're asking for a sewer, um, they have to provide a public benefit. And so, the developer had outlined basically the benefit that they would be providing, which would be um completing the extension of two seventy-sixth Street to Southeast Wax Road. It will be about a three-quarter uh of of a road improvement on the future portion along the city's property we will handle at such time we develop, but the sidewalk will be completed on the north side, and there will be a connection out to Wax Road. They've also been working with Public Works and Parks and making sure that we incorporate those crosswalks that are necessary for the soon-to-be-named SoCo Park. So, that's one of the public benefits that they're providing. Um, that obviously opens up that roadway, that'll be our first completed new street in our downtown, so that's a really cool um uh aspect um of creating that downtown grid. Um, because they are doing that project and because of the cost of that in relation to impact fees, we are willing to give them um some credit of about three hundred thousand dollars of transportation impact fees. They still have to pay, I think we're in like four hundred thousand, so we're still gonna get some impact fees from them, but we'll also get a completed street. Um, and then as part of that sewer extension agreement, um, they will be working, or they have proposed in the MOU, that um the city will have to pay no latecomers fees if and when we tap into that sewer in the future with the development. Um, and so, that's a estimated value to construct that sewer is about five hundred thousand, so they're doing quite a bit over and above, so that sewer easement. Um, so what we have before you tonight is that negotiated final memorandum of us, of understanding, and staff is just requesting that. Obviously, if you have any questions, we can discuss that, but ultimately, um, proposing that the city managers authorize that memorandum.
Does council have any questions for Selena? Yeah.
Yeah, reiterating again, do we have a design yet for the street? And we have some very basic requirements, the north sidewalk and that.
Yeah, yeah, and in the memorandum of understanding and the exhibit, um, they do outline, they do show that roadway extension design. Um, you'll see it's Exhibit A of the MOU on page five, kind of the purple section, if it's colored on your screen. So, they'll be completing a full sidewalk on the north side of the street, again, that connection of Southeast Wax Road. Um, obviously, all the improvements that are necessary for that to meet the, I think it's a type-two street in the downtown, so.
Just, just a two-lane, one in each direction, maybe a no-turn lane, but.
Right, right, right. And then ultimately, when the city builds out on that south portion of that, then we'll obviously reconfigure that to only meet that that requirement for the build-out, but there will be two passable travel lanes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Before us is the motion to author, the ability to make motions, authorize the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding and related sanitary sewer easement agreement in association with the Covington Commons Commercial Site Development Project, file number LU two-one dash zero zero two four.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Christina would like to speak to your motion.
No, we heard about this a lot in in-depth, um, and a lot more depth, um, previously, when Selena brought it to us. It makes sense for the city. There's, there's definitely a benefit. Um, I think everybody benefits from this, and it's just the smart thing to do.
Thank you. Debbie, would you like to speak to your second?
And I agree, it it makes sense. It's a a great benefit to the city. We're getting, getting more and more of it, so, thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding and related sanitary sewer easement agreement in association with the Covington Commons Commercial Site Development Project, file number LU two-one dash zero zero two four. All those in favor state aye. Aye, any opposed? And this has been approved. Thank you all very much. That concludes our new business. Next up is future agenda items. Uh, our next meeting is on March fourteenth. Uh, we will have uh commission interviews. I believe they start at five forty that night, and then we have our council meeting at seven. Does council have anything else you would like to see on a future agenda? Hey, let's move into council staff comments. We'll start with Adam.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, this is hot off the press. We had a success today with our community care specialist. Uh, we went out to Jenkins Creek to respond to complaints uh that sent to Ethan. Uh, we brought a police officer and Darren, and during that time, one of the people sleeping in a tent, uh, we referred to one of the shelters in Auburn. So, uh, we're working on better getting people there, because that's kind of one of the the uh weak links. We have some good ideas on that, but uh he was willing and took it. Um, he's apparently nicknamed Pantsless Joe, so hopefully we can help with keeping his pants on in the future, but um, I think he had them on this time, but um just wanted to highlight the success. We've had a couple other things that have been uh working well with them, so. Uh, we're gonna have him go through the park with one of our officers, hopefully, once a week, uh, so we can try to keep tabs on some of the tents, some of that, and get it before it gets out of hand. Um, other than that, that's all I have.
Thanks, Adam. Um, yes.
We were in that park the other day. Is that the wooden lane two thing that was going on up and up at the, on the top level behind the Home Depot area and the storage, or is it?
I don't know exactly where it was. I think it was a tent. Um, it's my understanding, there's a few of them, so.
Yeah, okay.
I believe they're all empty now. We're gonna check on it again, I think, tomorrow, and then again Thursday.
And I think there's, there's also the area that Multi-Care, I think, that's different than Jenkins Creek Park, but certainly you can see it from the park. And and we're gonna talk to Multi-Care and ask them to remove the stuff on their property tomorrow as well.
Thanks, Adam. Anybody else? Ethan? I have my list from where you guys all used to sit. That's where I'm remembering.
We mixed it up today. Uh, good evening, Council. Uh, just a couple of updates. One, um, the Aquatic Center is um closed for the next two weeks. It's the annual pool maintenance that they do. They're gonna be repairing some of the pool liner, uh, doing some other uh just fixes and repairs of the pool during that time. Uh, and then also, hot off the presses, we have a helpless name, the city's newest park announcement that's gone out, so for the next two weeks, we'll be uh collecting suggestions from the community, uh, so that we can bring those back to you after they go to the Parks Commission for a decision on what to name what we call SoCo Park right now. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan. Dawn?
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks for keeping that uh order, otherwise you'll confuse an old guy like me. So, uh, but nothing, uh, nothing else tonight. Thanks.
Thanks, Dawn. Selena?
Um, just two things for me. Uh, first one is I just wanna let you know that the Maple Hills Division Five, it has a public hearing tomorrow. Um, if you're not familiar with this, this is a twenty-two lot subdivision. Um, it is the first implementing project other than the roadway associated with the lakefront development. Um, so it's kind of exciting to see that come to fruition. Um, we're obviously still working with Brookfield and Toll on as they're progressing through the road improvements down the hill and out to SR eighteen. Um, and staff is also working closely with them if there's any potential changes to the development agreement. Um, we are getting wiser and smarter about some design now that we're out of that two-dimensional world, getting into the three dimensions. So, I'll keep you um informed if anything that might be coming back through the planning commission to the, to the council. And then lastly, I just want to thank you all for a really great joint session tonight. Um, I will speak for myself in that, um, this planning commission has been wonderful Um, I will speak for myself in that um, this planning commission has been wonderful to work with. Um, staff who put the initial. You know, PowerPoint together for them and walked through it at their last meeting, but I just really was impressed and appreciated how much they really took that and made that. Really their own voice and their own perspective and maybe I hope an exciting year. Um, ahead, we're gonna be busy. I don't know how we're gonna do it all, but I, I, we're gonna do it, right? We're gonna get there. We're always gonna cross the finish line somehow. Um, so I just really wanna, I appreciate all of your feedback tonight and it was a really funny meeting. In my.
Thanks, Selena. Uh, Casey.
Uh, nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. Mark.
There is an executive session tonight to review the performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty-one one zero sub one, sub little G. And just as a reminder to please state the time that the council, that you estimate that the council will be coming out of executive session. No other report.
Thanks, Mark. Regan.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, I just wanted to let you all know that um, AWC, the Employee Benefits Trust Program, it. Each year it recognizes member cities that achieve quality standards and employee health. And Covington was just notified that we earned the twenty twenty-three Well City Distinction. Uh, by making an outstanding commitment to our employee health and the base, basically what that means is we receive a. Two percent uh discount on our medical premiums for the following year. So a really great job by city staff. We've got a wonderful wellness program that focuses on both mental and uh our physical health. And our employees are really engaged in that and, and it uh saves us uh two percent on our medical premiums, so that's a wonderful thing. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Regan. Krista.
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Krista. Christina.
Um, speaking of AWC, we had an amazing time. Um, I'm once again reminded of how awesome our council is and I think, I don't think. Other people see it as well when they walk by and they go, wow, your council is really cool. You guys. Get along so well and I think maybe verbatim, uh, those words I heard several times actually. So it was, it was a wonderful time, um, getting to hear from. Many speakers on um, learning exactly how, you know, legislative session works and. The amount of bills that they have in this session, I don't envy them, but it was, it was a wonderful time, so thank you to all who went. Um, planning commission, that was awesome. Uh, yeah, you're shooting for the stars and we'll get the booth or something along those lines, but I am so excited. The, the future is so bright for Covington. I don't know that it's ever been better. And I'm really, really proud to be working with this amazing, amazing group who. Who just gets in there and does it, you know? You can talk about a lot of things all the time, but to, to see. Progress and to see things shifting and moving in Covington is, it just makes me so proud. Thank you.
Thanks, Christina. Beth?
It, it's always inspiring on nights like tonight. We, we start out with a great uh joint session and. Looking at the work that Planning Commission had done with uh ECSJ, all of volunteers tonight, it just, it speaks to the. Amount of um commitment that we have from staff, from our volunteers, from our community members and. Those inspiring moments are, I wanna make it proud to be part of this community and um. I just wanna thank the staff for putting all of that together and for the support that you all give to everybody, because it's. It's evident and we have a lot of work ahead of us, we all knew and Selena's testament to that, so. Um, but we're in it together, we'll, we'll make it happen. Thanks for that.
Thanks, Beth. Sean?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just one thing, on February seventeenth, uh, I think it was the same day we were down in Olympia. The Puget Sound RFA had a change in command ceremony. Um, Matt, the current chief, Matt Morris. Is retiring and so uh he actually is having uh some uh ACL surgery, so. Didn't wanna go on leave and then come back and then do the change, so they did the change uh of command. Brian Carson is now the new. Chief of the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority. Uh, he has been a deputy chief for a number of years, so I think. He'll be able to uh incorporate his change without missing a beat, so, anyway, new leadership at the RFA. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Debbie?
Thank you. Um, yes, going to Action Week was a big learning opportunity for me. Um, I appreciate everyone bearing with me and. All, all the things I'm still trying to learn. Um, it was refreshing to hear a couple of the representatives that we spoke with. Had a true affinity for Covington. Uh, grew up in Covington, uh, knew a lot of people in Covington. But as Christine said, everyone speaks very highly of our city, so that was encouraging. Um, anxious to see how everything's gonna pan out. Um, I think we had some good support. Um, on most of the agenda items. And then the other takeaway was in the networking time. I got an opportunity to meet other council members, mayors from other cities and. You know, nothing that we see here is unique to us, uh, that the problems that we see, especially problems with um, the police not being able to. Pursue and a lot, a lot of the crime things that we see here are just as bad, if not worse, in, in some of the other cities. Sometimes I would, I would like to have our residents know that. You know, they say, well, we, we're gonna move from Covington because, you know, we're tired of seeing cars getting stolen all the time, but it isn't happening just here. And I think that if we can get some of these um new bills approved and get some leverage back. Uh, for our police departments across the state, we'll, we'll see some of that go away. Hopefully, but anyway, um, it was a great opportunity, so I'm looking forward to next year and also to Spokane. We've got one coming up in the. Yeah, thank you. And another good opportunity to meet some of our counterparts.
Um, just a, a comment and a question. The volunteer uh, uh, event at the beginning, I know we used to have this big like separate volunteer event, but I do like. Having it here at the council meeting. It's really nice to have everyone in the room and. Get to see so many people who have been serving Covington for so many years. And the youth ones, like I was almost tearing up, like it's just, it's very inspiring. Um, and then I had a question, Ethan, I heard that there was. Uh, a leak at the pool in the roof and I was wondering what that was about and if there was any impact to services.
Uh, there, there is a leak in the roof drain. So the roof drains into a scupper on the roof and then that is piped to the outside. It actually pipes through the inside of the building. And there's a failure in that pipe. Um, so, um, it's a little bit tricky to fix it. We might need some engineering, it might require. Cutting parts of the roof out, replacing that, but we have a, a Band-Aid on it right now.
Is it like a big blue tarp or something?
Uh, I think it's actually a modified construction tone. So it's literally a Band-Aid, but it seems to be working for the most part. Um, but yeah, we're aware of it and uh. We'll figure out a fix for it.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Joe?
Uh, so. On the fifteen, I got to chair my first SCA caucus for the RTC. Because our caucus chair, Joe Pascal, was out of town and I got to be the one doing that, which made me the vice chair of the Regional Transit. Committee for the day and uh, we'll tell you, I did not in bus services. I was really trying to get more bus services started, so. So that's positive there. Uh, but I did. Uh, in further reading and talk and listening to everything that was being said. Have Krista send you all the agenda that we had that day and on there was the research program that Metro is using. Now they are starting to, this is, this is new, so everything on there was just a briefing and giving us some new ideas. Of what's going on, but I sent it to you because as a s- community who, we are trying to be a responsible community. And I, I firmly believe that all of us would use our metro system better if it didn't mean we had to drive to Kent first to hop on a bus or a train. Or drive to uh Bellevue to hop on the bus or train. Uh, because we've only got one route here and it's a lot quicker for us to walk anywhere than it is to hop on a bus with Metro right now. So if we could all just kind of look through that, if you have any questions or comments about it, please let me know and I'll get those. To the RTC, get them asked and answered and we'll pass that along. But as a community that's trying to be better, I think it's something that we should be looking at closely. Uh, other than that, I, I like. Uh, moving on from that now, the Human Services Commission is saying that they're gonna rotate the members who come and talk to us. If we can get every commission to do that, cause there's nothing against the chairs of the commissions, it's. We will see commissioners and then I will not see them again until we either have a joint meeting or they're up for reappointment. I think it would be great for us to see them again, because I don't know about all of you, but sometimes I have a hard time putting names to faces. And if they could be the, we could rotate it, I think that's a great idea and I applaud Human Services for that and I really hope we can get the other commissions to do the same thing. Other than that. I'm done.
Thanks, Joe. I just want to again express my gratitude to the council. Um, for all the engagement that you are stepping up to, to get involved and be in touch with our community. Um, it is great to see that. Uh, I've been working, and I mentioned it during our planning commission, I've been working with Krista and Carla to start up the mayor's meetup. Again, um, the first one will be on March twenty-first. Um, Sean will be uh joining me. For that and we'll hold it here at the um. Community room and then I'll reach out to each of you to join. Uh, we're gonna do some breakfast ones, we're gonna try those. This year and then reach out and go around the community like Kimberlane Clubhouse and other areas where we can join and uh. Draw people to, to see if they would like to join us and even take it to uh the schools if they would like to hold that. I believe it was February ninth, I had the opportunity to speak at Cedar Heights. Uh, Middle School to their government humanities class of periods five and six. Uh, which happened to be the same day that they announced um. One of their most favorite teachers, Miss BC, uh, was killed the day before, but. Uh, which we're working on trying to do a proclamation to be able to um honor her at school. So any council members that would, once I get a date, I will let the council members know who would like to join us. I think it would be most appropriate to do that. At the Cedar Heights and Joe, thank you for bringing that up. Uh, we have a um Crestwood Elementary has reached out and that is on March twenty-first. Uh, Joe and I are going to be there. I believe Beth is going to be there part and then um. Christina, you're gonna do the afternoon one. Okay, so, cause we don't wanna have more than three people, cause the classrooms are small. And then um, working with some of the other schools that we can go out and talk to our scholars about what we do and explain. To the schools that would like to have us there. AWC was outstanding, enjoyed that and thank you for those that were able to uh take time off, join us and just to let. Um, each of you know, I did sign and send letters. Um, for House Bill thirteen sixty-three to Representative Sterns and Senator Kaufman. And Representative Sterns has sent back saying that he is supporting it. Uh, this is about vehicle pursuit. And he has um signed a letter and it's moving forward. I've not heard back from Senator Kaufman yet, but um. See, hopefully that'll go forward. And then, um, as you know, I sit on, still sit on the board for communities and schools of Kent. They have their annual fundraising breakfast on March sixteenth. So if anybody would like to join me that morning, um, please let me know and I can, I have a table that I would love to have you sit at. And um, and that's at Thursday morning, March sixteenth and it'll be at the old Phoenix Academy. Um, on East Hill. I don't know what the school's called now that they've moved, so. But it's, we're the old Sacagawea Middle School, it used to be, it's Sequoia, thank you. Seven in the morning. Yeah, the old Sequoia Middle School, which was Phoenix Academy, so. Um, that is all I have. Uh, with that, we'll move into the second public comment period. To satisfy Joe, I will state all this. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually and dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. There's nobody in the audience, but is there anybody online that would like to address council? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody raise their hand, we are including business and we're going to go into an executive session. To review the performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero. Subsection one, subsection little G for approximately no more than nine PM tonight. At that time, we'll come back and no further business will be taken. And stop the recording. Um, after coming out of executive session to review the performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero. Subsection one, subsection little G, no further business is being taken. This meeting is adjourned at nine oh three. Thank you.